All right, we will call to order at 6:32. The special meeting of the governing board work session. Roll call, all board members are here and can we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move we adopt the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Dr. Finch, are you going to begin?
Sure.
And just before we start, again, I'm going to mention that board members, district staff, everybody that has contributed to this evening and the report, inclusive of our comments, emails that we've all read, want the best for our students. Our mindset is to keep our schools open safely as long as we can for our students, the key word there being safely. Also, board members, please remember that we'll keep our questions until Gary gets through his report. So, Dr. Finch, go ahead.
Hello, again, thank you. This work session is really about today and going forward, covering the whole school year, so you're going to see a reflection of both. Dr. Z is going to lead us through kind of a COVID report extended, so we can do a little review where we're and where we're headed. So, Dr. Z.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Ordaway, members of the board. Dr. Finch, again, it is my pleasure to present to you the return to school second semester report this evening during our work session. As Dr. Finch stated, even though the presentation is formally titled second semester, it certainly will cover information that we have done over the past several months in the current situation and then going forward. Okay. The overall purpose of this evening's presentation is to communicate the district's plan in response to the increasing numbers of the spread of COVID-19 in the community. Today's presentation contains three sections. The first is background context. The slides in this section will provide key background information for those viewers who are joining us for the time. The second section addresses the contingency planning and proactive preparation that administration has been doing for the past four to six weeks in the event that a change to the learning environment would be necessary, whether it be in the immediate, short, or long-term timeframe. The third and final section presents our plan for the second semester, beginning January the 4th. Okay, on this third slide, the image on the left is a snip from Arizona Department of Health Services safely returning to in-person instruction. Going back to the summer, district administration used this document along with other guidance documents such as ADE's roadmap to reopening schools and the CDC's decision tree tool to inform our work to safely open our Deer Valley schools. Three work teams, along with the stakeholder committee, met frequently to provide a framework for how we could provide both virtual and in-person learning opportunities. We know that not everything was perfect, and there were certainly bumps along the way, some bigger than others, but we do know that the work of our dedicated workforce, our teachers, our nurses, our admins, our community ed staff, and our other support staff, both at the site and district level, all contributed to support tens of thousands of students in our community, and they were able to and continue to receive a high-quality education and be provided a safe space with many caring adults. During this time, we have worked and have checked in with many, many groups, and some of these groups are put on this slide. The first with the monthly return to school reports, that group, of course, is you, our governing board, and so we have provided this consistently since, I believe, mid-February we started these reports. We also have had multiple communication structures where we have worked to make sure our stakeholders, whether it be our staff or our parents, so that they are in the know. Some of these communication structures, as you are aware of, have been our fireside chats, which we have done many times over the course of the past months. We have also had parent updates, at least on a weekly basis, and many times we have had those more throughout the week, sometimes even on a daily basis, as it was in the end of the spring semester in 1920. We have had various webinars for both our parents and our staff based on various topics. We also have provided through Dr. Finch's staff communications on a weekly basis, they have gotten updates, as well as various video messages that Dr. Finch has done for the staff. As well, we have done various Spanish video messages for the parent population, which I have done, and then, of course, our website updates through communication departments. Again, we have all worked very much at this communication piece, as this is one of the most important components as we have gone through the pandemic. We also have had consistent check-ins with our public health agencies, with the Maricopa County Department of Public Health. Jenna and I consistently work with their representatives, and I will go into more detail about that in future slides. We also have had check-ins with our employee groups. Jenna leads the charge with most of this. I sometimes join, along with other members of executive cabinet, but these groups do receive a continuous check-in and a routine check-in with district administration. And then, of course, the last bullet point I will reinforce again, through our dedicated workforce, they have done a tremendous job over the course of time here. Okay. This slide contains the criteria that Maricopa County Department of Public Health has for schools to be open and then when to consider going to an alternate environment, such as a virtual environment. And so, we have covered this slide in detail before, but it's important to cover it again as we are in a time when the numbers are increasing. And so, as the slide states, I'll read it verbatim, it says, "The guidance says that school districts would consider moving to virtual-for-all instruction when all three public health benchmarks are in the substantial, along with the consult." And as I have highlighted before, it's that consult part that sometimes does not get mentioned. And so, in the consult part, they do look at a variety of other factors, and those factors are listed here on this slide for you. Factor number one, the level of community transmission, that is the benchmarks, and so our case counts per 100,000, our percent positivity, and our COVID-like illness, those are the metrics that they are referring to in number one. And then, you can see two through seven are different types of factors that we consider. One of those primarily is the number of COVID-19 cases that are in our schools, both with our students and our staff, and again, we'll go into that more in a future slide, and you can see the other factors that are listed here. And again, we have covered these before. It's meant to be stated again, though, on purpose, so that we are all clear about what county looks at when they do give us guidance and recommendations. Okay, let's get to the metrics. And so, these metrics are released to us on Thursday mornings, and so you can see on the left, the metric is our case count per 100,000, and so, at this point, we are just under 290 for our district. That is in the substantial, or the red category, according to the metrics. On the right is our metric for percent positivity. You can see that our most recent data point is at a 9.95%. The data point before that was in the substantial, as it did increase above the 10% threshold, but again, as you can see, it did go back down into the moderate category at our last data report. This next slide contains the COVID-like illness metric. You can see that at this time, it is at 7.7%, which is in the moderate spread category, or the yellow. In summary, again, at this point, we have one of our metrics, which is in the substantial, or the red, as it is sometimes referred to, and we have two metrics that are in the moderate, or the yellow. So, even though all three metrics are not in the red, Maricopa County still does suggest that we engage in a consult with them when we have one of our metrics that is in the substantial spread. And so, during the week of November 2nd, as it is listed there, that is the first week that Jenna and I did do a consult with Maricopa County, because our case count metric did reach the substantial category during that week. During that consult, we reviewed our mitigation plan with the public health representatives. We looked at the procedures and the processes that we use for administering quarantine and isolation procedures, both for staff and for students. We looked at our ability to staff our classrooms as well, given that we know there are absences from our staff due to whether it is COVID, or if it's due to other related illnesses, or just to another reason, perhaps a planned absence that they already had scheduled. We also did a quite deep dive look at our COVID-19 dashboard, and so we looked at each case scenario by school. We looked at the number of classrooms that were impacted, and again, that shouldn't be a surprise to anyone, because that is clearly listed on their factors that they state that they look at when we do our consult. And so, Jenna and I started that on the week of November the 2nd, and then we have engaged in additional consults, even though we didn't need to, as we did not rise to the three metrics in the substantial, but we believe it's the prudent thing to do, is to check in with the public health authorities to review our metrics and to see if there's any different guidance that they would give us based on the current situation. And, thank you, Jenna. And Jenna's comment was that regardless of the consults, we are in communication with county, as I have told you before, on a weekly basis, if not daily basis, for whatever matter that it may be that we are consulting with them. Okay. Regarding the DVUSD dashboard, again, here is a snip from our most recent dashboard. We do post this each Monday in the afternoon with our current active cases. The case counts have grown since we have initially began posting. That is a fact. In mid-October, when we began posting, we started with approximately 20 cases around there, and then the case counts rose incrementally, approximately five or six case counts a week for several weeks. And then, most recently, however, we have seen an acceleration in the increase in the case counts in our schools. So, whereas before, again, we saw an increase of, say, five to six case counts per week, we are seeing more than that now, especially beginning on November the 16th, is when we began seeing an increase of more than that. Our current, it's not on here, but our current case count, and I believe you know this, as it was posted and I submitted it via the board update, is that we are at 102 on our posting yesterday. Okay. Due to the changing nature of the environment, district administration have been engaged in the contingency planning. And again, that shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, as that is what all organizations, whether they are in education or not, have been doing throughout this pandemic. We have been using the items that are bolted here as a guiding framework for us by putting students first in our decision-making and also trying to be proactive, and then finally providing options as far as how we would respond in the event that county would suggest, again, to us that a different learning environment would be recommended. And I should say, or required, if the governor were to intervene at some level. Okay. So, this slide captures the options that we are considering in response to COVID-19 situations at our schools. We will cover each one of these that are listed in more detail in each of their own slides. They are listed in order in the way that we would prefer to implement these at our schools. So, you can see, the first one is called precision conversion, and we label this precision because it's more of a surgical response, so going to where exactly the problem would be in our district. So, not looking at it from a district-wide perspective, but seeing perhaps there was one school that either was a hotspot, or perhaps there was a staffing issue where we just are not able to staff that particular school, that we would look to apply a precision conversion at that school. And again, we'll go into more detail. The second option is called virtual-for-all, short-term with onsite support. And just so that we're all on the same page, when you see onsite support on our slides, it refers to what we called in our district, the free, safe learning space. The technical term for free space is called onsite support, as defined by the governor and in the emergency measures. Our third item is a structural adjustment. You can see there that it talks about an A/B hybrid. I know, I'm very clear that the word hybrid gets many different interpretations from how folks view it, and so we are putting it clearly here that it's more the A/B model, and Dr. Galligan will go into detail on that. And then, our fourth option, which we very much hope does not come to that, I don't believe anybody hopes that it comes to that, is a virtual-for-all, long-term, and as you will see on that, is actually a very brief slide, and that slide is more of something as if the governor would intervene and say that all schools need to go to all for some elongated period of time. Okay. Again, as far as the precision conversions to virtual, you can see here that in order, we might do something such as converting a classroom. Now, we have converted many classrooms already as far as responding to COVID-19 situations. Mainly, they are due to when there is a situation where there are so many students that are in quarantine in particular classroom, that it doesn't make sense to have one or two students in the classroom, so we would switch that classroom into a virtual setting-for-all. And sometimes, it has happened where we have a teacher that is unable to do that classroom, and so, in that particular situation, then we did convert that to a virtual environment. It has not been a lot, I want to be clear on that, but we have done it some since the start of when kids have returned to in-person instruction. The other three options there of converting a grade level, a school, or a region, we are happy that so far, we have not had to do that. It is not to say that we haven't come close at times. There have been a couple situations at the middle school level where we have been close to converting a grade level, and that has been primarily due to when both of those factors were at play, when we had a large number of students that were in quarantine, and in addition to that, we had staff members that may have been involved with that. And so, that's when we have been close to that, but through the work of Dr. Galligan and Dr. Chunis and Mrs. Moffett, we were able to arrange for those environments where we could do the reverse Zoom, which we have heard about before, where the teacher is teaching from home into the Zoom format, and then there are other support personnel onsite that were supervising the children. And so, that is how we have been able to do it so far with that. And then, the conversion of the schools, again, we have not been in a situation where we have needed to do that, and then converting a region, again, but it does not mean to say that this is something that we wouldn't consider if need be going forward. Okay. As far as this precision conversion, many times, this is a option, and in terms of when I said we've used it before, this is in the immediate term. And so, it is an option that we need to use in situations when there is less than 24 hours' notice, because it is usually a response to something that has happened that we just have become aware of, and so then Jenna and I are working to make sure that the environment is ready to have a staff member teach it, and then also making sure it's safe for the students. And so, we have had work teams, across our work teams have been involved with this in our various return-to-school safely meetings. We have done simulations for this. I have updated you in the board updates about these, where various stakeholders from around the district meet, and we put different situations on the table and make sure that we have anticipated different types of scenarios that may surface. You can see different types of communication structures that would be used here, depending on the scope of the conversion to virtual. So, of course, if it happens in a single classroom environment, some of these would not necessarily be required, so we wouldn't put it on a district website if we converted one classroom, but of course, if we rose to the level of a school closing, that would be when we would need to increase the scope of communication as far as what the community would be aware of. And then, the fourth bullet point here talks about one- or two-day conversions to virtual and three or more days. And this is an important concept, because there are different pieces to the puzzle that would be added if we went to a situation where three or more days would be required. And so, you can see here that for students with IEPs, for our food nutrition support and our technology support, excuse me, all of those would still occur during the one to two days, but they would look different if it went beyond that. And so, let me give you one example with the food nutrition. When this has happened in our single classrooms, we have informed the parents that if you have a need for food, that you could contact the school's cafeteria manager, and the school would work that out as far as supporting that family with any food and nutrition needs. If it went, though, again, beyond those two days, that's when we would look at doing something different, because that likely means that we would be looking at a conversion to virtual on a larger scale. It would be perhaps multiple grade levels or even a school, and so then, we would want to make sure that we have the appropriate response for the scale and scope of that conversion. And the same would be, again, for students with IEPs. Our early grades versus our upper grades, there are some differences for those students as well in our upper grades. You know that the students are able to join in in synchronous learning and have access to the technology with their devices, because they take them home already. For some of our younger students, they don't necessarily take their devices home on a daily basis. And so, for our kindergarten through, Dr. Galligan, it'd have to help me, I believe it's through our third-grade students, and it could differ on some of our canvases, but it would be a situation that if we closed for one or two days, that we would not necessarily have a technology distribution for the students, if it was contained to that short of a timeline. But again, if we needed to go beyond the two days, so it was three or more days, then we would need to arrange to do something for that, where we could get the technology to the students to make sure they can continue with their Canvas platform. Dr. Galligan's division with CIA, they have already engaged in the contingency planning for this, and so they have support materials for the kindergarten through third-grade students during those one or two days, again, if that were to be needed. Okay. Let's go to option number two, which is the virtual-for-all with onsite support, short-term. This one, there actually is a mistake on here, I apologize. So, that precision conversion, it really should just say conversion, and so, when it is a predetermined period of... Should I pause? Okay. For a predetermined short period of time, and it's put in here, this would be a one- or two-week cycle that we would look at if we needed to move to a virtual-for-all setting like this. During this, it really goes back to our framework, where we want to be proactive, and that is when we can foresee a situation, perhaps, when a large number of COVID-19 cases is likely going to come. If this needed to happen, because it would be a one- or a two-week cycle, we would look at implementing the free, safe learning space option or the onsite support. And so, that would be for our students who are currently paying for our before-and-after-school community ed program. We would look to make sure we are supporting our students from our group homes. It would be also a situation that we would look to support the employees of any students who needed to report on campus during that time that we were in a virtual-for-all, because although the item is labeled virtual-for-all, there are some employees that would need to be on campus due to the fact that we would have the free space learning. And there are other items to that as well, as far as how we would look to support students. Food and nutrition would also provide for our community. This really would not be much different than what we were doing before our first phase in, in September, when we come back. So, this would not be our first rodeo, if you will, with this type of situation, and so we would flip back to some of those processes and systems that we were using, as they were quite effective for our community. Through Dr. Galligan's and Dr. Chunis's work, our work with the Canvas Core Shells would be our platform and our guide for the curriculum and the instructional program that all of our students would use. And again, although I know there were bumps in the road with that, and it took work with our parents to help educate them, it has been something that has been very fruitful for us, and I believe other districts are recognizing that as well with our own curriculum that we have made here. Another piece for us here, our number five, is that relationships have been established, and we believe that if a short-term virtual-for-all option was necessary, it likely would even be more fruitful than it was the first time, because for many of our students, they would have established those relationships with their teachers, whereas when they started the year, they did not necessarily have those relationships with the staff, because they were having teachers new for that particular school year. Now, certainly, for some students, that may not be the case, particularly perhaps in our high schools, if students are switching from certain special areas in their elective courses, but for the majority of our students, they will have had those relationships, and that will be a good help. And also, a point that's important for this virtual-for-all short-term is that there is a clear date for re-entry. It is something that Jenna and I would work with Maricopa County with, again, as we anticipate and foresee how a situation may unfold, and so with that, we would say, okay, this is the date that we know that we can come back and do our school in a safe manner. Okay. For our third option, I'm going to ask Dr. Galligan to come on for our structural adjustments and what we call the hybrid model. Dr. Galligan?
The return to learning team met to develop a plan for K-6, K-8, true middle schools and high school levels. Should we have to go into a structural adjustment for a hybrid model? Similar to the precision conversions that Dr. Zerbach talked about, we would identify an adjustment to a hybrid model that would occur perhaps first at a grade band or grade level, then spread to a region, and then finally, if necessary, to the entire district. You will see two similar but slightly different hybrid plans here. Both K-8 and true middle school, high school plans split students into two groups who attend in person on different days of the week. I'm going to look at, we're going to look at these last name initials. Students with A through L last names, their first initial, attend on Monday and Tuesday, while students with last names beginning in L through Z are at home. Students flip on Wednesday and Thursday, with the L through Z students attending in person and the A through Z students at home. The last name breakdown for in-person attendance will be in place for both K-8 and 912. Students in the same family with different last names will attend the in-person dates and the at-home dates as their other siblings that are home with them. Knowing that there will not always be a clean split with students to balance the class sizes, we have given the, we will give the campus administrators the discretion to balance their class sizes, ensuring that students who have siblings in other schools, like maybe high school, if we're looking at a K-6 school, that they remain on the scheduled in-person days, so that there is not a conflict. In general, they would look at students who do not have siblings at different schools before they would make some final decisions. Really, the difference between the two plans fall on what occurs during the at-home days. The true middle schools and high school teachers will provide synchronous support through Zoom when students are at home while maintaining their Canvas courses. K-6 and K-8 students will start with an asynchronous learning on the at-home days. However, our campus administrators, after a week or so of the hybrid model, could determine to move to synchronous support if their students are not making adequate progress on the asynchronous days. This change of the model would be in conjunction with Dr. Zerbach, Jenna, and Jennifer, the supervisors of our principals. Another difference between the two plans is that our K-6, K-8 students will attend in person on Fridays, based again on their last name initials. So, for example, students with the last name that starts with an A through L would attend in person the first Friday, hybrid learning begins, while the students that have last names with L through Z would remain virtual. The next Friday, the L through Z students attend in person, while the A through Z students remain at home. We would have a clear visual calendar for our parents, so that they completely know how that would work, and our schools would communicate weekly. This alternating schedule would take place as long as the hybrid model was also in place. Now, for the true middle schools and high schools, they're kind of similar, but slightly different in that all students are virtual, they remain at home virtually and attend synchronously. They too would have an alternating schedule, though. The first Friday, students would attend their A block classes. So, if you remember, right now, we are on a block schedule with our true middle schools and our high schools, and they have their block A day on Monday and their block B day on Tuesday. So, in this instance, on the first Friday, all students would attend their A-block classes, and then the following Friday, they would attend their B-block classes, and it would alternate back and forth as long as we were in a hybrid model. Gary, you can go ahead and flip. What you'll see here is the return to learning team is working on these particular topics and some of those logistics in the event we are required to move into a structural adjustment with a hybrid model. So, you can see, those areas that we feel we still need to determine would be, how much time would we need to give our schools and our parents notice for moving into a structured adjustment? In addition, we know that for our staff, more so our elementary, this would be a bit of a challenge. For our middle school and high schools, it would be a continuation of what at least our high schools are doing right now, we know, for our true middle schools. our high schools are doing right now, we know for our true middle schools. This could be a little bit different, but we feel the professional development would need to happen at least for a week or so before we would move into a hybrid model. You can see we still would identify our communication timelines, a free space, a learning space, and all of the work that Barb Irvin and Gary have been doing is currently in planning. And then, again, as Gary mentioned, the reentry criteria to our regular schedule would need to be worked through for some final details. We would also want to address for our campuses to help support them, those unique families' situation requests, and we know that those will occur. The materials distribution, we know that, as I've mentioned in some of the Friday updates, that making sure that all of the students who currently are in DVOA have the materials, but this would be true for all students. And then, if we were to move into whether it was a short term virtual or a hybrid model, our DVOA students would remain with their DVOA teachers. And then we would have expectations for in-person and at-home attendance, similar to the way we did at the beginning of the year when we started virtual for all. And then you can see there are some refining logistics that we are currently working through. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Dr. Gallagher. And I would just add to the board, because I know we have had discussions before about the hybrid model, that really and truly the three slides here still do not capture the complexity of moving to something like this. Again, to reiterate some of the points that we've talked about before, one with the free safe learning space option, it presents many complications with this particular, and could put us at a situation where we would not be able to staff various schools and classrooms. Again, I would just reiterate, it presents many complications to do this. And it is also, I would say, not something that many of our administrators are not at this point in support of doing something like this at this point either. Okay, our fourth option that is up here, as I noted before in the introductory slide to this part, is the virtual for all long term. And again, as I noted before, this really is if a situation where the governor would call for this long-term conversion, such as what the governor did in 1920 and at the start of 2021. Okay, the next slide captures some SCL support, but I'm actually going to skip this slide and come back to this at the end, as I think I will get to the magic slide that everyone is tuning in for. So the second semester plan is listed on this slide, and so DVUSD administration is planning to do a short term virtual for all for our students when we do return from the winter recess. And so I'll jump around here a little bit, and then I'll provide some more rationale as to how we came to that decision. So first of all, as the first bullet point states, our winter camps would continue as regularly scheduled with our mitigation procedures in place. And so that would be at Desert Sage School, and it is two sets of three days during our winter recess. These camps ran throughout the summer, even when the case counts in the community were quite high. And as you are already aware, they ran with much success, as Barb and her crew do a wonderful job with the mitigation plan. And so we are confident that that's something we can continue and have the same success that we had in the summer, again, even when the community counts were high as they are now. For our K-8 students, our early childhood, which is defined by our developmental preschool and our Head Start, that they would be in a short term virtual for all, beginning Monday, January the 4th, and extending 10 school days through Friday, January the 15th, with a return to in-person instruction activities on Tuesday, January 19th. Now, the reason that it does not say Monday is because Monday is already a holiday at this point, and so that's why it would be a Tuesday return to in-person instruction. Our high schools are similar but slightly different. And so high schools would as well commence with a virtual for all short term on Monday, January the 4th. However, they would differ because they would go an additional four days of virtual environment through January the 22nd. They would return in person on Monday, January the 25th. Now, the reason for the extension for the high school is that, as you are aware, when you look at the COVID-19 dashboard, our high schools do have a higher number of COVID-19 counts, and there are reasons for that. We have discussed that with you before. To reiterate some of that, we do know, along with public health, that our high schoolers have more exposure. They are older, they have more independence, they are going to have more interactions with other members of the community. And so with that, along with, it's just a larger student enrollment. And so as you know, our high schools, depending on the high school that you choose, that could represent four to six of our elementary schools, again, depending on the particular elementary schools. And so because of those with our case counts, we are planning to have them out an additional week. And the reason for both the K-8 and the high schools, as far as doing this short term virtual for all, is again, the acceleration of the case counts that we have been seeing during this holiday season. And so we expect, as does public health, and everyone has seen the news, that these are likely to continue during the winter recess. And so due to that, we feel that this would be a safe option for us, as we do want our schools to stay open, but we also want to do it in the right way. We realize that this will be inconvenient for many of our parents who are relying on the school staying open, but we do need to do this in the right way for our staff and for administrators as well, as this does require quite a bit of time to do the COVID management at the schools. And so by taking a cooling off period, if you will, it is a full 14 days, even though the CDC has revised their quarantine guidelines to 10 days and seven with the caveat there, which we can go into later if the board desires. But originally, with the 14-day concept, it was we would go through that full 14-day cycle after January 1st, where we know there will be congregate gatherings by members of the community. It would also get us past any of the other holidays, whether it be Christmas or Hanukkah, again, through the full 14-day cycle for that. And then for our high school students, again, we know that due to their interactions being on an increased level, it will add an additional week as a cooldown period for that particular process. On the bottom is an asterisk, which says the precision conversions to virtual could occur between now and December 18th, and that really is just a reminder for our community that that is always possible. Again, as we noted before, these are used in terms of the immediate period of time, and so folks should be aware that it is a possibility that we would need to shut down and convert to virtual, perhaps multiple grade levels or a school if need be. As I indicated before, even though we are, we would be, or we will be in this virtual for all environment, there are some particular staff that would need to report in person on January the 4th. And so I would like to go through these bullet points now, as far as who would report. And so community education preschool would begin on January the 4th in person with their regular mitigation procedures. Again, let me reiterate that the way we started the year is how this would start for community ed. They began on the first date that school was scheduled to start when we started this school year. And so with their mitigation measures and the success, we believe that they can do that safely. Our Canvas administrators and support personnel, as listed on this slide, office support, custodians, food nutrition, nurses, and other classified staff for the free space learning or the onsite support would need to be on campus to support our community. Our district office staff would report as normal on January the 4th. And then our free space, although it is mentioned in bullet point two, I did want to highlight it again, that that would be onsite support. And so for our staff members that are, that are needed to be on campus, if they have children that they need support with, that we could provide that for our staff members. And then along with any of the other groups that would need support based on capacity, and I want to reiterate, is based on capacity. We do want to help as many as we can, but there is limited capacity with this. And so based on what the capacity that we have, we could provide that free space site. And then you can see here, again, with the help of our community ed staff, our transportation nurses and other classified staff, such as many of our paras that are on our campuses, we could do that during that particular timeframe. Now, it says on this slide, governing board, January 4th through January the 15th, but no, for our high schools, that would continue on for that third week. I didn't put the 22nd on this because the vast majority of our students that are in the free safe or onsite support program come from our K-8 sites, or I should say, in the K-8 range. And so, but it would continue, to be clear, for our high school students until January the 22nd. Okay, so let me go back now to the SEL support piece here. So with all of this being said, again, I do want to recognize that I am sure this will cause consternation for many folks due to the conversion. So we are looking at ways to continue to help support our community with this. At this time, we have a parent webinar that is scheduled for December 16th. And in that webinar, you can see the details here, that we have personnel from Transitions Counseling that will be providing this webinar for these topics, such as mental health support during this era of COVID-19, and we know the numbers are increasing, it's all over the news, and so it is on the minds of everyone. And then looking at how do you handle the holidays? How do you handle things such as anxiety and depression during this time? And so we look to provide that, to record it, and have that available to our parent population. And then, as you know, we continue our great partnership with Southwest Behavioral Health and Services. The items that are listed here are things that we look to continue doing with them and for them to provide to us. And so we appreciate our partnership with them. They do wonderful things for our students and our parents, and so we are very thankful for that partnership, and they will continue to provide that. And so with that being said, President Ordway, that takes me to the last slide, and so we would welcome questions at this point.
Before we begin the questions, I want to thank you for the detail, and I don't know, I guess you're not keeping count of hours that you guys have put into this. How about we start with Ms. Reed?
Just, sorry, just for a clarifying question, is there a different report that we're going to be discussing during our meeting for return to learning?
President Ordway, Ms. Reed, in terms of this particular part, no. This is, this is this, this is when we're discussing this. There is a return to school report, but it is very few slides and pertains mainly to staffing and has one slide on curriculum.
Okay, thank you. So just a few questions. As far as a free safe learning space, like we did in the fall, will all schools have that option? Will there, or are we regionalizing it?
Yes, President Ordway, Ms. Reed, it would be, it would take the format that we used in the second phase of the free safe or onsite support, which is how you described it initially. So it would be where it was at the actual sites, not the clustered six sites.
Okay, perfect. And then when will that information be available to parents first? Do we know that yet?
So as far as signup, again, because of capacity, there already are lists for students who would need that. And so our first course of action is to touch base with those existing lists of our students to see who is going to need that. That will likely, Ms. Reed, fill up all the capacity that we have for this in terms of, at the district oversight level, as we did in the second phase of the free space learning campuses. If they were to have additional capacity that they could do, then the sites would handle that on their own, and that is how they did it in the second phase of the free space in the fall.
Okay.
Ms. Reed, just real quick, clarification on how we're determining the capacity, and then go back into your questions. Just to clarify how we determine the capacity.
Yes, President Ordway. So on our capacity, we work with Barb Irvin, and we work to make sure that we have our six feet, first of all, that are in the classrooms with our staff for the physical social distancing. And so from that, it is pretty much based on then how many staff members we have that are available to do that at the particular school. And so we can work with our transportation staff, as we did initially, because we would not be running our routes during those first two weeks. And so Ernie will help us with providing some of those staff members for that. And so depending, again, on how many staff members we can get, I believe we also maxed at, I'm going to say 15 in a room, President Ordway, when we did that, in addition to our physical distancing requirements for that free space.
Go ahead, Mrs. Reed, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to clarify.
That was my last question in regards to that. The other, that's okay, the other questions I can ask during our regular board meeting. I don't want to take up too much time.
Ms. Tweedy?
In terms, one of the things you mentioned was staffing. So with that, I want to know, is sub-rotation optional or is it mandatory?
Jenna, do you want to take that question?
President Ordway, Dr. Tweedy, sub-rotation is a job expectation, but I'll do my best to describe, as I did last time when we discussed this. You do have the option, when you are asked to go on sub-rotation, to indicate a reason why you would not be able to go on sub-rotation. So when the plans or the maps, the sub-maps are put together, or the rotation maps are put together, everyone has the option to review those maps. So if there's a time early in the year, or which it's put together, that an employee would need to voice a reason why they could not go on sub-rotation, they could do it then. But there are times daily, you might not have been a problem in the beginning, and it could be a problem now. It could be a conflict because you have something scheduled. It could be a health concern. It could be that you were on sub-rotation the day before and are requesting to be not on sub-rotation this time, could appear. One of my peers, please go on rotation this time. So there, there are reasons why some, an administrator may choose not to put you in, even though they requested that you, you do go in. But in simple terms, yes, certified staff members are expected to go on to sub-rotation.
So with that, I guess I have an ask. One of the things that's been bugging me, and this isn't directed at all of you, but throughout this pandemic, is what is believed to be hypocrisy of leadership, like having an expectation of somebody else that say you don't have of yourself. And you see it like with the legislature's open schools, we're going to shut ourselves down because somebody may have been indirectly exposed, or don't travel, I'm going to go hop on a plane. I would just ask that, I think it would, mostly the teachers I've talked to don't want to do it because, you know, they know somebody just got sent home with COVID from that room, and now they're going in there. So my ask of you guys would be to put yourselves on sub-rotation a day and go sub in a room if you're asking other people to do it. And if the response is going to be, I'm too busy, I think that's disrespectful to people who are on sub-rotation every day. They're just as busy as you. So I think if that is something you're going to ask, and you're standing behind the safety of that, I would just ask that all you guys take a turn on sub-rotation.
I can answer that.
Dr. Tweedy, I think that's an absolutely reasonable request, and is something that district staff are doing. We've deployed this week again. Gary and I have, other people in this room have, and I, we have administrators at campus sites that are routinely in classrooms trying, trying to cover as well. We absolute, I understand your disclaimer, not only this year, but any given year. But I do want you to know that everyone up here is taking this very, very seriously, and we agree with you that if we're going to ask others to be in the classroom, why not us too?
If I could just interject, Ms. Moffett, have you considered asking the legislators to, could you give them emergency certificates? I know that you're issuing emergency sub certs, and they have a week on their hands.
We could use their help.
Sub shortage problem solved, you're welcome.
Thank you.
And, and so, thank you for that. And then the next ask would be, you are increasing high school teachers' exposure from 180 kids to an extra 30, and I just think you should run that by the Health Department if it has not been, if that is an appropriate mitigation. I mean, I just, so I have big concerns about that, but I don't want to take up, so I'll save the rest of mine for later, too, but thank you.
Ms. Frank?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for presenting the plan for next semester. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for presenting the plan for next semester. I know that it will be a hardship for many families. I do think it is a prudent step to take, and I'm glad that you are, we are rolling this out now, so people have time to prepare. So I want to thank you for that. And also acknowledge, I, this, this school year's been really hard for everybody. So now, I do have a couple of questions regarding the data. So Dr. Zerbock, you referenced the 290 cases per 100,000 for the district and our current 9.95% positivity rate for the district as a whole. I know we're an extremely large district. Dr. Finch, off, off the top of your head, do you know the square mileage?
382, 386.
367 square miles.
I guess I'm the late board member who didn't have it memorized. That's okay. I'm almost done with my term.
That'll be a Jeopardy's question.
Yeah, Deer Valley Jeopardy question. So have you, and have you with Maricopa County Public Health, looked at the benchmarks and the data per ZIP code? Because we encompass, now I know the answer to this one, nine ZIP code areas. Is that something you have looked at, or have you just looked at the benchmarks for the district as a whole?
Sure. President Ordway, Ms. Frank, the ZIP code data is certainly something that we have looked at with Maricopa County, because as, as you would guess, there is a range in some of the numbers that we have. And so that is part of the process and the protocol that they take you through when you look at the benchmark numbers.
So you've talked tonight about precision, being precise, and I just want to state, I did look yesterday at individual ZIP codes. We have 22 schools in ZIP codes where they have had two red benchmarks for two weeks and positivity rates over 10%. We have 32 schools that are at or above a 10% positivity rate. The schools New River and I think Canyon Springs are in a ZIP code where the positivity rate is 15.45%. Even if you look at West Wing and Terramar, which has a lower positivity rate of 8.34%, they have 322, 0.62 cases per 100,000. Those are some alarming numbers. So I think it's important, as you're looking at your precision, being precise, taking a surgical approach, that I would like to see this data considered, because there are only seven schools encompassing three ZIP codes that have a positivity rate below 10%. You guys all know what an outlier is, right?
Yes.
And what happens when you put your outliers in with the data set. And I, I would suggest that the ZIP code areas of 85085, 85083, and 85383 are outliers within this data set. And if you remove them, you're going to hit two red benchmarks for two weeks. So I'm, I applaud your efforts and all of your hard work to present a plan to keep our employees and our students safe after winter break begins and into the beginning of the year. I, I can't thank you enough for that. But I am really, really concerned about what happens to our students and staff between now and December 18th. And I would like to know, I, I know you've given us a lot of information about things that could happen, but if you go back to Slide 3, and I'm pulling out Selecting a Delivery Model, and it says right here, "When all three benchmarks have moved to a greater risk category, e.g. previously green, now yellow, LEA should consider transitioning to the appropriate risk model." That is every school in our district, because back in September, we were all green on the COVID-like illnesses. There's not a single ZIP code that's green anymore. And we have numerous schools, as I mentioned, that have been red on two benchmarks for two weeks, and others are red and yellow. There's no green. So what is the appropriate risk model for our schools, especially for those with a positivity rate over 10%? And how do we plan to transition to that? Or are we just going to kind of cross our fingers and hope everybody hangs on until winter break starts?
Sure, Ms. Frank, I wouldn't characterize it as crossing our fingers, but I, I would say that, just as we have commented on before, we do, we monitor this on a daily basis. And so with our COVID numbers that are in the schools, we take a look at those, we look for patterns that we can find. Is there something on a particular gray level that we're seeing? Is there something perhaps that we are noticing with gray levels that may have interaction, if there will be? Perhaps it's during cafeteria time, something like that. And so if we identify something like that, then we would take action. And then just to reiterate, as far as the, the actual benchmark numbers, again, yes, that is something that we do look at with our county health authority for public health. And so heretofore, they have let us know that what we're doing, it looks like it's still manageable, again, as I have mentioned, in terms of their guidance. And so we would continue that, as well as our daily monitoring.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to express another concern, and I wasn't meaning to be disrespectful to you when I made the reference to cross your fingers. It's just kind of how I express myself. I'm hearing, I'm receiving anecdotal evidence from school nurses and from teachers that many COVID cases are not being reported, that parents are, the kid gets mildly ill, they may stay home for 10 to 14 days, it's never reported as a COVID case. That would skew our numbers. If parents aren't reporting, or maybe they never took the kid to get tested because, well, they thought maybe it was a cold, and they didn't want to subject them to getting a swab up their nose for a cold, we'll just keep them home for 14 days and then send them back to school. If that's going on to any large degree, then we're not getting a full picture. Our, our data is not complete. And in the air monitoring world, we say the only thing that's worse than no data is bad data, because we make decisions that affect people's lives based on our data. So I want to express that concern, that we may not be getting the full picture. And I am extremely concerned about, especially those 22 schools that have been at two red benchmarks for two weeks now. But again, I thank you for the detail and the information that you've given us.
If I can answer there? I can, I can respond. I would just, I would, Ms. Frank, I would say that it is a, it is a potential limitation. You are correct. If a parent chooses not to have their child tested, because we don't have a state or a county requirement for testing, that, that is true. That, that is a potential limitation for that. I guess I would say to that, though, too, that is to our benchmark numbers as well, right? So it is no different than the county than it would be for us. It's, it's only for those who are going to receive the test. And so it's possible that percent positivity is lower than actually what it is on the, on the dashboard. If everyone goes and testing is, perhaps it is higher. And so, so it is true, it's only for those who have gone to testing. As far as folks who have gone, Ms. Frank, and tested and not reported it, county also informs us of our positive cases. Now, now that said, I will let folks know, it has been getting longer. It is true. Whereas before, it may have been a shorter timeframe when we would get that confirmation. With some of the increasing numbers, it is taking a longer amount of time to do that. But we do have that as a backup for folks who go to get tested, test positive, but do not report it to us. Now, what I can say, though, to that, is that we did not see that, Ms. Frank, as a problem, as far as when we were getting reports back prior to, let's say, the last four weeks, that we did not see an issue where folks were not reporting it to us. And so that, that was not a pattern that we saw.
Thank you.
Mrs. O'Brien?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the very extensive report and the information. And Dr. Finch, I, I know that when we talked about this plan, I expressed to you my concern about only being out virtual for one week after the holiday break. So thank you for making those adjustments, I'm sure, based on data, but for hearing me. And I believe every school board member at this dais is deeply concerned about our staff and our, and our students on multiple levels, and for a variety of reasons, as is the cabinet that is working on this every day to make sure that we are safe. I don't have so much as a question, as I have a plea to our community. You asked us to provide an in-person learning option when we went virtual at the beginning of the year. And the school board, and Dr. Finch, and the cabinets, we worked all together to come up with that option. We need the community to follow the rules, the mitigation strategies, to ensure that we can stay open when we come back, so that we can come off of virtual and we can be open and we can stay open. I know it is difficult. There are times when we have to make decisions that we don't really want to make, like missing Thanksgiving dinner with your family because you don't feel so well on Thanksgiving Day. So I just, if your kid is sick, don't send them to school. You know, we'd love for you to get them tested so that we can know what is really going on and how that impacts our students. Please don't send your kids to parties. Please keep them home. I know this is a difficult year. Parenting is difficult in normal circumstances. I can't imagine how difficult it is to have young children today. So as a school board member, I've received the emails from both sides, folks who want to be virtual, and then folks who are begging us to stay open because of the impact it is on their students, teachers, we're getting them from teachers, parents, and community members. So thank you for indulging me and not asking questions, but for just putting out a plea to our community members to please follow the mitigation strategies so that we can keep our Deer Valley students in the classroom where they get their best learning and are safe, because it is not spreading in our schools like it, like it is in the community. Thank you.
And Mrs. O'Brien, if I could, just to add on to that, as a reminder that are watching, that we have our very clear procedures for reporting cases of COVID-19 or suspected COVID-19 on our website, dvusd.org/returntoschool. And so, again, to just add on more to what you said, Mrs. O'Brien, thank you for that. If folks could go there, they would see exactly what to do if they suspect that.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbock. That is a good reminder that that is there, as well as much other information related to resources for testing, what you need to do, and all of those things. And if there's something not there, please ask your teacher or your school principal if you need something that, that isn't there. Thank you.
Mrs. Tweedy?
I just have two more things. I'll make them really quick. The one thing I just wanted to clarify about our dashboard, because I keep getting emails from both sides of this about the data, and it, I don't think the people understand our dashboard. So what the health experts have said to us, and Dr. Sunnenschein came and said, and it kind of goes to Ms. Frank's point, and I'm not saying this to take sides or make a value judgment, it's just a data statement. The positivity rate tells us how widespread it is in a community, and if under-testing is a problem, a likely problem. So if you have a high positivity rate, you know you have a lot more undiagnosed cases. If you have a low, and then that's why they want the low positivity rate. None of the schools actually know their positivity rate, because we don't know how many kids took a test. So it doesn't really demonstrate that it's not spreading on our campus more than it is in the, less than it is in the community, and it isn't demonstrating that it's spreading more on our campuses. It's actually a data point we don't have, so we shouldn't really be making statements, because we don't know. So I mean, if we don't know, we might assume it's spreading like the community, and that might be a reasonable assumption. But you can't say, like, 99.9% of our students don't have it, because we don't know that. We only know how many people have reported an active case, so I wanted that as a clarification. And, and it's not the district's fault, but since we don't know. So if we were to report 102 cases on our dashboard, if 1,200 students tested last week, we would have a 10% positivity rate. We don't know if 1,200 students tested last week, so we don't actually know our positivity rate. If more than 1,200 students tested, we would have a lower than 10% positivity rate, which would be great news, but we don't know it. And then again, so that's how positivity works. So our dashboards in no way indicate how far spread the virus is at schools. We don't know. And so I just felt like the community should be aware of that, because people on both sides are saying, it's doing this, it's doing that. You just, we don't know. But the other thing I was hoping you could provide more specific information, and I'm not saying it's tonight, it would be to the community as well and to the administrators. When you talk about moving to hybrid, what is, a structural adjustments? What is the specific criteria for that? So I mean, to me, if we don't have any green benchmarks, and it says hybrid, I interpret that to mean we should have distance between our students? So unless we have green benchmarks, we should be doing some form of a structural adjustment? If that's not the intent, then, I mean, I think communicating specific criteria for that, so that the schools know it's coming, the parents know it's coming, the teachers know it's coming. So if you know that information, I'd like you to share it, but if you don't, I would like more specifics.
Sure, Dr. Tweedy. So the, in response to your second question about the hybrid, that again goes with the second part of the county's guidance as far as the consult piece. And so if the consult with the county was that the only way that they would recommend having an in-person learning environment is if we had that type of model, then that is when we would look to have that conversation, as far as perhaps this is what we need to do. At this point, that has not been the case from county. And then in response to your, your first question, as far as the data dashboard, indeed, the, the dashboard is not intended to communicate a metric, if you will, as far as percent positivity. It is for actual current case counts that are in the school. What we look for in those times is to see, is there something out of whack with a school's dashboard that is not reflective in the community's case count metric? And so what we are, what we do look at at times to see, and we notice that many of our schools' actual dashboards do not reflect what is in the community. And so even when you look at our dashboard this week, you will find many schools that have zero reported COVID cases in that school. And again, I, I understand the piece that it is for those who have reported, as you noted, Ms. Frank, for that. So there, there could be others that are out there who, if they would have tested, perhaps that would have been. But again, I would say that's the case for all the metrics that we have in the community, because it's only those that report. But again, for many of our schools who have the numbers that they have, sometimes it is not the number that's reflected in the, in the community metric.
Ms. Frank, has a quick question?
So I, I think, just first a comment, I think we can all agree, it's unfortunate we're working with imperfect data, and we're making important decisions that are, can have serious ramifications for people's lives. So that's a comment. I did email, and I did ask if you could provide the name of the special at Maricopa County Public Health who you are consulting with, and I did not receive that information.
Yes, we can get that to you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go way back to our free space. Is there any possibility that we can provide transportation, or is that something that is not a possibility?
President Ordway, that is a conundrum with the transportation, because it's the transportation staff that help us do the actual free space supervision and support during the day. So it's, it's in essence a one-to-one negative relationship there. So every person that we start taking to do transportation means that we have less capacity to support our students in the free space environment.
The reason I ask that is because we do have certain title schools, not that all schools don't have kids that need to utilize a free space, but certainly we have kids at the title schools as our numbers for, family issues have
Correct.
Been on the rise, that if they're not in that walking area... been on the rise, that if they're not in that walking area, that would limit their ability to be in that free, and I'm going to say safe space. So while you guys are working on this more, if there would be a way to figure out some kind of strategy for transportation when we see the need for it, I'd really appreciate that, even if it would be, I think you call them micro birds, the smaller of us is, perhaps we could work something out with that. And again, all of the information that you have given us is going to be with humans reporting what they want to report. Now, if you get a COVID test and it's positive, the rules are, they should report it to us. County Health would report it to us if the family has not, correct? And there's a little bit of a lag time right now, because of
There is an extended lag time, President Ordey, right now.
So with that being said, everything that we can do to mitigate this from moving in our campuses, I think we're doing, I think we're getting better at it. I think we're learning how to use the supplies that we have. And I just really want to thank you guys for listening to what we're saying. What we're saying is what the public's saying. The public are telling you what they want. I'm sure children are also telling you things, so thank you for being the very good listeners that you are. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, President Ordey. With respect to the bus transportation, that is something that we can continue to look at. It is a difficult one, as I've noted, President Ordey, there. One thing that has been a recent request by some of the administrators with respect to transportation is if we cannot transport students, is there a way that we can look to expand our food distribution while using some of our transportation staff to our families who need that? John did a wonderful job with that in the initial stages of this year when we did do that. And so that is something that perhaps Mr. Migliore and I can follow up with her to see, is that something that we can perhaps, at a minimum, continue and maybe expand, especially in the regions where our Title I schools are located?
No, appreciate that. I know you guys have all that stuff on your minds, too. I just want to let you know that I believe as a board, we would support, you know, whatever it is that we would need to do. So with that, I think we're going to conclude this special session at 6:45. Can I get a motion?
I move we adjourn the meeting. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and we're going to take five minutes before Heather and Jim